It is now 6:35, and I'm gonna call the meeting to order for January 19th. Let's see, we'll call. We have Mike Ahorn Chairman, John Renlet Vice Chair.
Paulson is excused.
Okay. Rhonda Bishop, John Kelly, Pat Roach. We have the Selectman's alternate, Richard Lewis, and Staff President Sharon Penny.
And Bob Dragon is excused also. Called it.
So it brings us to item number three, Public Comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, Administrative Matters, where I am gonna let Sharon talk about number or letter A.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight was also supposed to be an opportunity for our public testimony on the one item we have for a change to the Plymouth zoning ordinance, and due to an error in the posting, the newspaper, we missed the deadline by, I believe it was two days. It was a technical glitch. Anyway, I had sent you folks out an email and asking for another date on this. The time is getting very, very tight in terms of the posting, the statutory requirements for posting, and Dick Lewis fortunately pointed it out to me that the paper we're using at this point right now, because we have to do this expeditiously, they have Saturday, Sunday as one issue. So I had to make an executive decision today to put the public notice in for February 2nd of 2012, which is our regularly scheduled work session. That'll be in about two weeks, which will be the new hearing date for the public input on that one zoning change. So it'll be in the newspapers, duly posted here and other places. There are some sheets in the back, and just FYI for anyone who's listening, tonight we will not be discussing any changes to the Plymouth zoning ordinance.
That brings us to Minor Subdivision, PID 240-002 Lot 1, 895 Texas Hill Road. Originally noticed for 12/15/11 and continued to this meeting, the owner seeks to divide the property back into two separate lots, which reflects the original lot configuration prior to a 1996 approved lot merger. This parcel is located in the agricultural zone. Sharon, did you wanna?
Well, Mr. Caserino's here. He's gonna represent himself. I do have the, a copy of the large survey. Everybody got a smaller one, but if we just wanna pass this around, this is exquisitely simple. As you mentioned before, this piece was, two separate parcels previously was properly merged by the planning, previous planning board, and now the owner, Mr. Caserino, would like to essentially unmerge it. So it's technically a minor subdivision, but it's just a throwback to a previous status, so.
Okay. Mr. Caserino.
Thank you. Thank you to the board for hearing me this evening, and as stated, I'm looking to kind of turn the hands of time backwards to the pre-merger status of the property as reflected on the map, and the two deeds which, the two deeds describe that map. That map, the 1974, I think Mr. Malcomer stands that map, and recently, a few years ago, Kevin French came up, Kevin French surveying, and we surveyed the whole property as well, did wetland review, and we were very happy with, you know, the findings, and other than a very few small discrepancy between chain and tape and GPS, Kevin French was very satisfied that properties were accurately recorded. I'm not sure why the previous owner had merged the two lots in 96 on state owner, but I'm looking to go back to put the lots to pre-1960 conditions and to provide them back to the, the way it was prior to the merger.
Can you tell me just where these lots are? Are they anywhere near the former home city?
Uh, no. I am up from, I'm right across from Sandra Mitchell's land. I'm, if you go from the Dick Brown end.
The big field out there.
Yeah, up the street a bit. I'm in the flats, right next to Pete and Barbara Cass, next to their sugar shack. So I'm about, almost one proper mile from Dick Brown Road. So that's the easiest way is to get in by Stanley Huckins way up to my house, as opposed to twisting up from the, from the pond. So I'm on the far end, and I lie between the gully before Pete and Barbara's sugar shack, and I'm kind of located right in the flats. And Mrs. Mitchell owns, I think, that whole stretch of road, all the way down to the stop sign. So if that gives you an idea of where on Texas Hill.
Ms. Bishop?
I just have a question. Is it in current use at this time?
No, it is not. I suspect perhaps the owner prior, who did the merger, I suspect maybe that's what he was wanting to do. He was out in Waltham, Mass., and, and they'd been coming up less and less. I suspect that was the original intent.
Right, 'cause it would be 13.3 acres, so it would meet the minimum.
Yeah, I believe it met the minimum, and I don't know why he never went that direction. Maybe he was, been looking to move the property, and he didn't purchase the property till seven years ago.
And your house is on parcel one?
Correct, yes, on the 6.34 parcel, abutting the Cass property.
I just have some comments. If none of the board needs any discussion on this, this is just some recommendations. Obviously, if it is in current use, it would come out as two separate parcels, because they wouldn't meet the minimum for that, and I believe in the planner report that you folks got on this case, I've determined that the minor subdivision, obviously there's been no changes, this is just a pro forma, meets all current zoning ordinance criteria for frontage, lot size, septic area, and other requirements, which would create two new conforming lots of record. Mr. Caserino, I will urge the board as a condition of this approval, this is just, again, pro forma, you'll need to file a corrected Mylar, or a new Mylar, or have, if Kevin French is your surveyor, have Kevin do it with the related affidavit at the Grafton County Registry of Deeds, signed, sealed, and delivered by Kevin with his official stamp, and also, there'll have to be two new relevant deeds created for the two parcels, and the town would need, let's see, if Kevin files the actual Mylars, we would need three stamped copies of the new survey, signed, stamped, and the deeds, please, when they're done, just so we keep our records straight, so that your, your taxes are, are not messed up, because once a correction goes unheeded, it takes eons to fix it. So we'd appreciate that. Yep.
And I might wanna make one correction. If he owns two lots next to each other, I don't believe he'd have to, if it were in current use now, I don't believe he'd have to make any changes to that until he, or someone built a house, or.
Okay, well, as long as, yeah, as long as he, yeah, you know, speaks to Kate, makes sure that everything's all, yeah, that's right, 'cause they're contiguous, so, yeah.
So at this point, we could entertain a motion that the application is complete? Unless anybody has any more questions? Mr. Lewis?
Uh, no questions. I'd, I'd make that motion.
Okay. Second, with Mr. Kelly? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so the application is complete? Do we have any further discussion on the application, or on the, on the table? No. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the subdivision? Second?
Second.
Mr. Renlet, moved by Mr. Kelly?
With those conditions I mentioned.
With the condition, do you wanna go over that again, or is that?
I'll, I'll be writing up the notice, so I'll just.
All those in favor of approving the subdivision, signify by sigh, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that is done.
Thank you.
That and $10 will get you a minor subdivision. I'll see you later on that one. Not to worry. Thanks. Yep, specifics. Great, thank you.
Item number five, Correspondence.
Nope.
Okay, brings us to number six, Unfinished Another Business. We have A. Steve Tower, LOS Roy Saborn of Saborn Surveying to present an FYI notification for correction of illegal right-of-way description. Yes. All right.
I have some plans, and I have full set of some small ones, and I could read them.
That'd be great. Actually, I have.
Is this where we did the site plan?
This is, this is.
I've got one, Rhonda, thank you. Yep. I'll take that one for trial. Thank you. Right, right. I know we, yeah, we spoke about that, so that's fine. Yep, that's great.
Okay. We started doing some work for Gary and Lisa Lad, his wife. They own these two lots right now. They have separate entities on your tax map, separate deeds, everything. Then they started talking with the neighbor at the end, Sandra Richard, and agreed to purchase this lot. Sandra has three of those, one, two, and three, and they agreed to sell and purchase this from her, and so then we, we started doing our work, and first we did the work on this side, and the boundary, and the top of the stuff, and Gary said, "Well, I think we're gonna try to buy this other piece from Sandra." So then it soon became apparent that we had an issue with where the road was, okay? The end of the Talveen Cave Road is on the Lad boundary right now. Very great, yes, exactly, the, 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 the thing, the best, that's what we did. The Talveen Cave is to that point, okay? Beyond that, they do not, and as you can see with the double dashed lines, this is where the original roadway was intended to go, from there out through to where Kenan Young and Brian Young have their place now. That road ever got built in that location. The road exists as we've shown in Yow today on the plan, so it seemed as though the simplest, easiest way to fix this issue was to build the new plan, locate the over, it actually is, and then exchange deeds between the parties. So what will actually happen is, and the Marples are the only people that really aren't involved. The Marples' lot was lost for many, many years, and now it's in two dollars, and it sits between the Lad and the Ristor on the lake. They have a lakefront lot. They're not really a party to this. Nothing changes for them. Their driveway exists, their house, the buildings exist, nothing is involved there. So what will happen is, after we get through this point tonight, and the reason I'm here tonight, let me just explain that. Normally, I would stamp this, not a subdivision, we'd recall the plan. It would be a done deal. The certification I used on that and laid out by the state statute says, if there's any subdivision or any new way that is shown, it needs to be signed up by the planning board. That's why I'm here, the new way terminology, because it exists, but it isn't where it originally was, so I think just to make it clean and clear and simple, that's why I'm here tonight.
We appreciate that.
Okay? It'll give everybody a chance to straighten up things that needed to be straightened up for a long time. Obviously, the Youngs are going in and out on the road, they're probably way along, but technically, they're supposed to be down here. And of course, the other thing you become, an issue is you're too close to the, to the boundary of the road. This house that was built quite a number of years ago now, so all those, all those things, if the road is moving there, that's, that's the way it is. But, so anyhow, the ultimate goal will be to, have you folks say, we don't have a problem with the relocation, and that's where we go, the plan of as-built roadway, 'cause that's where the thing is, okay, for the three parties. Ultimately, Ms. Richard will sell this lot to Ms. Lad, and they will come back with a request to merge this lot with this one. So you're gonna eliminate one more owner, a possible owner out there, which is a good thing for the lake, and whatnot. Ms. Rich is keeping these two at this point. I think they are to sell, and as far as the law, there's no change anticipated with the Youngs. And what will happen is, the Youngs have a deeded right way to get to their land, but technically, it's down here. So they'll give a deed back to Sandra to extinguish that way. She will give them a new deed that says they have the right to go over her land, and Lisa will do the same thing, 'cause the seller's Lisa Fuller, and she and Sandra will give a new deed to the Youngs, so they get legitimate access to use the roadway, issue on our plan. This plan, a boundary Mylar, the plan will go on record along with the deeds, so everything will be nice and neat, tidy, well packaged, and this won't be a problem in the future. That's all the other items. So I think that's pretty much sums up why I'm here and what's, what's up, and I'd certainly be happy to kind of answer any questions that the board may have.
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Saborn? Ms. Bishop?
I just wanted to know where it ends for the main, maintenance of the town. Is it classified here for continuation for a Class 6 road, or is it just town ends, that's the end, there's no, this is a private way?
Not really, it's not that's how it is. The town maintains to this point, they turn around on Gary's driveway, right here, Gary's driveway, okay? That's where they turn the truck around.
And then what, this road that's already existing, what is it classified?
That is going to be a classified, because it's town maintained.
Well, right there, but.
Right.
And then.
It's all the way up to who Lake Road, to Chesapeake Road. That's all, that same stretch, okay? So that would all be classified from Chesapeake Road to that point. From there on, it'll be a private driveway, a private roadway, whatever terminology you might choose to use.
So I'm assuming that on these two dollars casually built Marple's property, that it's already deeded, because it looks like their actual driveway is on the Lad property, so it must be already deeded, but they have the right.
Well, see, that was always the intended road, so they're coming off, they're coming out of the intended road. They have no issue. So they're, yeah, that's one of the things I was concerned about, but they are not, they don't have a problem, because they're coming out of the, where they're supposed to be anyhow. It's the people beyond, it's where Riches and the Youngs that have the issue. But Marples are free and clear, that nothing changes from there.
At this, yes, Mr. Lewis?
Kind of follow-up to that question. So that section to the east of the Lad Marple property, where it says end of town maintained, that section right here is part of the property, that's the roadway. There is, I thought, yes. Technically, probably, everybody almost knew the road if you wanna split hairs, but the town has the right easement right, based upon the history, which has passed out through the years. This came up, Gary and Brian and some others, I think, they were at a, like, some years ago, and hashed this all out in the town. Everybody, you must go to there, 'cause it could turn on, and Gary's driveway, and it's, and it wasn't really that a good place, and that's why that point was chosen. There was no need to go beyond that at that time, I don't, I don't think Sanders' house was there at that time.
Is there any intent that's been approved by the town for the extension?
There's been no talk about that whatsoever. I don't think anybody wants that, to be perfectly honest.
Is there any way that something could be said that they couldn't?
Mr. Lad sitting right here, Gary Lad, my client, he could probably answer that, Mr. Kelly, better than I, but this, that hasn't been the way it's been presented so.
The extension of what, the, the, the?
Well, the, 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 the town road around, the five-side road, sometimes along the way, some of them never want to do that, maintain, file, and page, whatever, and if, if that is the intent of not having that done, it probably should be in writing so that it wouldn't be, right, if it's intended to do that, I think maybe the board might like to know about it.
You're talking about the new driveway?
Yeah.
Okay.
The private.
Yeah, no, no, and, I mean, this is right away, it's being branded as a, as a, as a, to the merger.
Well, the roadway has to be.
So always leave it as a private driveway.
It has nothing to do with you, but if you should ever happen to die, or whatever, then, you know, somebody else could do it, and it could be relatively expensive, because I think that there are limits out there, and anything like that, so it could be.
Yeah, they'll, they'll never get a, if you want right away either, you know, it's, the right away's 30, 30 feet on the plan, it's, you know.
40 feet?
So, that's gonna, in my town, that would be an automatic no, if you can't come up with a 50-foot right way, town isn't gonna take it anyhow, so. And that's, that's what's okay now, and we didn't try to widen, so, so that isn't a possibility, really, unless everybody got together and for some reason decided they wanted to do it. There's no benefit to anybody to do that.
This is basically an as-built. It's a correction of the record.
That's what it is. That's what the whole purpose of this is. And this is where it takes title to that other lot, then she'll come back in with an application, which Mr. Penny gave us, we'll fill that out, and we'll go through that, and that's supposed to be furnished, so there'll only be three owners.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mr. Saborn. Please, yes, go ahead.
I just, once again, I'm gonna hold you to the same task. Mr. Caserino, could you make sure, Mr. Saborn, that we get copies of the new deeds too, just for later on, when we're all gone and we don't?
You don't get those from the registry?
Not necessarily.
I thought the town sent copies out, though.
Well, sometimes, but I mean, that's where, not that you would do it, but sometimes that's where the ball gets dropped, and we end up having partial information on, on a change that's transpired in five years down the road, you know.
They gotta be drafted, and once, you know, once they're drafted and signed, there's no reason we can't have copies of those.
Yep.
But they will all be, the intent would be to ask you folks to sign the Mylar on mine, so we can give it to Mr. Ray, so that he can draft the documents, and then he would probably report everything, so, I think this is all gonna happen at one time, and then he could furnish copies to the board at the time that they record.
That would be wonderful.
So at this point, we're looking for the planning board to approve this change in the private right-of-way serving those existing lots?
It's not, it's, it's to approve the change in the plat, because as we all know, just, I just wanna make sure in the language, the right-of-way itself, the de facto right-of-way isn't going anywhere. Where it should've been is not where it ended up. So you're approving the as-built, which corrects the survey plat?
The other part of the equation is that the survey plat never got recorded. It was done in the 50s, it never got for the history of.
Well, there you go.
Okay, so there is no subdivision plat.
Okay, so there's no record at the.
For this, this little end of the world.
All right.
Plow the car.
This is a good deed, then.
It would be a lot, issues for a lot of people down the road.
Here's what my question is, if it has really nothing to do with the town, so, why is it, and follow lots acceptable after this is all done, but why are we here for?
Because, Mr. Kelly, normally, as I, as I said before, I have a certification of it, put on my plan, if it's a boundary plan, I certify this is not a subdivision pursuant to RSE, blah, 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 that is discussed, and that no new ways are shown. That's terminology, that it has to be on the plat, and I'm saying, this is an existing way, but it is not where the original way was designed by deed documents. So I think it is a new way. That's why I'm asking for you to sign the plat. Clear that out.
All right. So it looks like we are looking to approve the as-built change in the right-of-way concerning lots 201-13, 201-14, 201-15, 201-16, 201-17? Does that sound like that might handle the, if we get an approval on that, we'd cover all our bases?
No, I'm just trying to find the letter. Well, it wouldn't, yeah, it wouldn't hurt to have that in the notice of decision.
14, 14.
There we go, it's on your letter. Yeah, it's on the letter.
How about 17?
17 is on the town street.
All right. Okay, so we don't have to worry about 17. Okay.
Just for the ones that were cited, just for technical.
Why would it be 14? Well, again, it's technically, well, it doesn't change anything for them, but it's not, it doesn't go within the strip beside Route Palat 40.
Okay.
That's why we put it in the, in the paperwork.
Do we have any further discussion on this matter? So we are looking for a motion that would say to approve the as-built change in the right-of-way concerning lots 201-13, 201-14, 201-15, and 201-16. Moved by Mr. Kelly, second by Mr. Renlet. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of this approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? We're done.
Could we possibly get a signature at this point from you, sir?
Yep. Yep.
Well, I, I brought, I think there are eight copies, yes, with all the parties can have one, and turn to Ray, and, and on my, uh...
Too much.
If you have any extra, but I also need, uh, paper to have to distribute, do you need just copies?
I need three signed paper copies, which, yeah, so as long as I get three, I don't care what's next. All right. This is amazing.
This is the mile lot right here?
Yeah.
So that's the only one I need to sign, correct?
No, I'd like it to sign on my...
They all need to be signed. Nice.
I'd replace the nineteen.
Not to worry.
We don't need a second signature, do we?
Uh, no, just the date, I can't see that far. Secretary.
I'll go check the very down, let's get the bill over here.
That's me, so, yeah. Thank you. Too much paper. Oh, you bet. It was a pleasure working with you guys, Fred.
I had to get that cleaned up.
Yeah, I love it.
Thank you. That brings us to item B, Michael McGinley, owner, and Jeffrey Lewis, P.E., to present a conceptual plan regarding proposed development of Riverside Landing-Tenny Mountain Highway. Welcome back.
Good to be here. So I'm Jeff Lewis from North Point Engineering, happy with, with McGinley, who is the property owner, and Riverside Landing is a property on Tenny Mountain Highway, across from Highland Street, that is probably known to everybody here as Lowe's site, or the Fordham Field site, or something like that.
A mystery site.
An infamous site.
Right.
So we're here tonight to let you, let you folks know what's going on and what hopefully is coming before even the coming months here. Lowe's is, at the moment, and probably for the future, not part of the, of the project anymore. The quick history, I'm sure all of you know it, probably better than I do myself, but the project was approved for a Lowe's development, with a couple of pharmacy and a restaurant also on the site, after, so, after an appeal process, I filed a base with the Supreme Court in the spring of 2010, I believe, at which time the court upheld the settled decision, so the last two years, there's been approval in place from the planning board, a site plan approval, for that development, is set to expire, it's a two-year approval, so it's set to expire by May of this year. There's also approvals in place for, for the state, for Aldridge Terrain, for DVS, for that project, for the employees, and for several more years, I don't know what the expiration of that is, but it's down the road. But it looks like that development's not gonna move forward in that, uh, layout. So I was just gonna point out to you, the property here, it's about eighty-one acres in total, and it's right here on this plan, Highland Street comes down right here, Tenny Mountain Highway right there, Baker River is right on the, we'll, we'll, we'll do it at the site, and it's this big area here, plenty is actually pleased up across, and owned by, uh, Mrs. McGinley. And this plan here, it's just a copy of the record approved site plan for Lowe's, just as an overview, to kinda show you what they, what has been approved on the site. I just color-coded this really quickly to identify two different areas on the plan, which would end up being the subject of the appeal and the lawsuit. Breakdown here is the development area of the site, those are the proposed Lowe's here, the pharmacy here, the restaurant here, there was gonna be some extensive improvements done to the intersection, Highland Street to Tenny Mountain Highway, some road widening, new, new traffic signals, main access coming in here, just for the development. Obviously, the environmentally sensitive zone associated with the river, the floodplain and floodway associated with the river, a part of the constraints on this site that had to be dealt with. And the plan that ultimately, ultimately got approved by the, by the town and by the state was this layout, this configuration, in which they were taking a lot of fill material from down here in the floodplain, adjacent to the river, and bringing it up to use as developable, uh, material for the site. And at the same time, this green area here was being, would be the floodplain compensation area, because they did have floodplain impacts here. So there's a one-on-one mitigation proposed of this site, that being a novel delivery area, just being a, a floodplain, a necessary storage area. So at this point, we are, Mike has a couple of users lined up that are in the, negotiating, final negotiation stages with them, and it's for a couple of small uses that we're proposing to be right up on the, on the highway here. So what we'll probably be coming before you with is a development, a first-phase development, as we're calling it, for some uses right on the highway. What we're, we're trying to do, or attempt is to mimic the same development footprint that was, that's already approved and implemented for Lowe's, which would basically be a, a future build-out area over here that matches the, the development footprint of Lowe's, the same area utilized for floodplain mitigation and fill, but a phase-one development for the two pad sites, as we'll call them, at the front, with the understanding that subsequent to that, we'd be coming back for the different uses as, as they become available, or as the end users become, you know, come onboard. Similar to the, the previous development, the B-to-B, extensive offset improvements associated with the intersection of Highland Street, we've had discussions with DOT, NHDOT, to the effect of phasing those improvements, so that as part of this initial phase with the front two pads, we only do a first-phase improvement. The, the, the full build-up of that intersection would be necessitated until the full development, or, or further development occurs on the site. So that's something that we're, we're working with that long enough now. So we're likely to come before you with a, the development plan, master plan, if you will, for this whole thing, but then a very specific plan for the, for the front area, along with some proposed offset improvements for the first phase. You know, our, like I said, our, the intent would be that there'll be no, no impact that what was on was previously approved and under the current approval, that goes for the, you know, impact of the floodplain, impact of the floodway, impact of the environmental sensitive zone, total building coverage, I think they had total one-hundred-and-thirty-thousand square feet of building area on, on this, on this plan, and would not exceed that on the, on this, so we could legitimately say it'll be no, no more impact, if anything, it'll be less of an impact on areas on the, on the current, current plan. That's basically it, I mean, like I said, we just wanted to, you know, let, let you folks know where we are, we're not necessarily looking for any feedback, or with specific questions, if you obviously have any, have any for us or any questions, we'd be happy to, to talk about, type about those, but we are hoping that we're back here within the coming months for a formal application with, for the lawsuit.
How big is the building, do you know?
These are just two pad sites that we have out, out here right now, are proposed, um, a little bit different than what was proposed in the Lowe's development, we're probably gonna be proposing to actually carve off some lots as we go, so that they'll be on individual lots, so we're showing a one-and-a-half acre and just under one-and-a-half acre lot out there. We'll each have a, a smaller-sized commercial development, the idea would be that there'd be a shared drive that comes in between them, that would then serve for the main access, very similar to, to what the Lowe's plan was, there was a main access that came in and served the development with pads on either side, and so we're just trying to carve off a reasonable area for, for a phase of development.
Well, you have, you have like four, little garden, and, or whatever you wanna call them.
Yeah, there's a number of alternatives, and we're marketing it several different ways, with some larger end users on the back, not as big as the Lowe's, or, or several pad sites, or something like that, but what we, what we do have is, we do have, we do wanna come in with the two, the two front users now, knowing that we don't know exactly what's gonna happen on that at this point.
And what's gonna happen to the intersection? And, and, I know Lowe's was big enough so that they could do the, the improvements on that.
Right, the Lowe's plan, um, that the traffic, that was regenerated from that, necessitated additional lanes, turning lanes in, in other direction, um, and, and some, some widening of the road, and re-sigilization of the road, obviously because of turning lanes and adding a fourth lane on the intersection, so the traffic distributed by these two pads would not necessitate the additional lanes, so there wouldn't be any road widening, per se, as part of this first phase of development. What we'd be doing is going in and adding a, the fourth signal for the, for the northbound lake intersection, and, um, adding some, fixing up the signals that are out there, because there would be some left-turn movement into the site that would be, to be done by the, the, the middle lane that's out there now. And then whenever there was another, would, future development out here, that would trigger the, the binding of the, of the intersection, so that would be guided phases.
Good question, Mr. Kelly, Ms. Bishop.
Yeah, um, I'm just wondering, first, if you can tell me, you said that there are one-and-a-half acres per pad there, what is the total large pad of the Lowe's proposed? How many acres is that in the brown spot there?
That's a good question, I don't have that right here. I'm trying to think if I have a quick way to figure that out. I, I don't know off the top of my head, so I would say, three, sixteen acres or so, something like that, sixteen, twenty acres maybe.
The other question I had, I just wanted to figure out, to get a sense, I don't know how you guys look at it, whether, like, percentage ratio, like, you're only using, like, you're saying it's one-and-a-half, so you're actually using twenty acres of that, sixteen, so, I'm just wondering, is there a percentage ratio that you look for, okay, we're using this amount, so we need to take this amount from, um, say, one of those third, um, parcels, out of the, um, sensitive zone, bring that in and bring it out, is there like a percentage of that dirt that you need to bring in?
Right, well, right, we would only bring the dirt in as we need it, so...
There's gonna be, you're working with a ratio right now, I mean, to be considered for that sixteen acres, you had to bring out that so much more, so, is that how it's figured?
Well, that's in the alteration of terrain, that would be...
Yeah, I mean, the idea, at the end of the day, that we'd be bringing all the dirt out to fill in this whole area, so that could happen in the next phase of the development. Right, you asked me right now, for just these two front pads, how much will we need to bring out? Yeah, it's...
Right, how was that, work with the state approval and all that stuff, is it, like, okay, we're gonna do this before it's was approved, so we're...
We would need, similarly to what we would need to do with the town, um, we will need to be getting a, a new state permit for anything that we're...
Yeah, it's a different configuration.
Okay, but similar to the planning board, you know, we'll be building on, I mean, we'll be starting over with the planning board, but we don't wanna agree with them, but we own it, because this is a sensitive area, and sensitive subjects out there, so we wanna make sure that we're, you know, using these.
I just wanted to see if it was a simple thing.
Mr. Kelly.
I guess my big concern is, if anybody came out from the traffic circle down to where the new DVS is, many of those buildings are, um, not the most attractive buildings in the world, and there's a lot of, uh, small, one-story buildings, and it looks to me like that's exactly what's gonna continue on, and with Lowe's, it was a big national con, you know, concern, and so consequently, they were bound by a lot of, uh, regulations and national, um, items, not only that, but, you know, small stores, you're just gonna continue with your pizza places, and, uh, wide guy hardware store, or automobile store, and it's just gonna continue to be, uh, not, let's say, the fire Plymouth is gonna burn, it's just gonna be more little stores along the way there, and I just don't know, and, you know, whether this has anything to do with it, but I just think that the planning board has got, and that's what the planning board is for, is to have a plan for Plymouth, and to have an acceptable plan that was, uh, that was nice-looking, and, and, uh, could be controlled by, um, not just Plymouth's, um, desire, but the, the national desire, and I'm just afraid, you can put two more in there, and I can just do two pizza places, and hardware store, and, and some other store, yeah, I think it, uh, I think it just irritates the whole situation on Tenny Mountain Highway.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Um, we will have an opportunity for design review at that point, right now, this is, this is purely conceptual, um, and, and I certainly take to heart Mr. Kelly's concerns, that's where we perhaps need to tighten up our design specifications a little bit more, but these folks are still, you know, working with, with entities, and I think there's an, an even chance that they may be of a franchisee-type aspect, which would have some, some corporate design standards to begin with, but we're not gonna let anybody put up any tar paper shacks, so you can rest assured on that. But I do take Mr. Kelly's concerns to heart, because we have to think comprehensively about Tenny Mountain Highway, 'cause it is kinda piecemeal, but we just, we need to not stray too, too far into particulars at this point, because this is not a, an a butter-noticed presentation, so...
Mr. Roach.
Yes, Ms. Chair, thank you. At this point, do you have any people interested in those, persons of those pad sites? I don't need to know who I just wanna know.
There's a, there's a, a bank, proposed for one site, and a fast food restaurant for the other, that's basically what I can say right now, those are in the final stages of negotiation, so hopefully we'll be coming back with those, you specifically, and they would share the trajectory, but we should be sharing them between the two of you. Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, I noticed the, the lot on the right goes outside of the pad area, that's just the property line, not necessarily the pad.
Yes, that's right, the development line would be, that's correct.
I, I would like to say, just so that, that everyone realizes that due diligence is definitely in place, Mr. McGinley and, and Mr. Lewis have been meeting very informally, uh, once or twice with Brian Murphy, our building inspector slash zoning officer, and myself, just to, to work through this in the proper manner, and just, you know, have everybody up to speed and know what the particulars are, to, you know, make sure it's all done correctly, 'cause this was, this particular, uh, previous development, as we all know, was, was an issue of contention, so they are very diligent in making sure that all the prescriptions in terms of alterations of terrain and, uh, sensitive overlays and everything else will be adhered to, so...
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
When Lowe's was coming in here, they were willing to put in, um, natural habitat areas, they were willing to put in, uh, boat ramps, they were willing to put in athletic fields, they were willing to do so many things, and right now, that is out the window, and we're grappling to get, to, to get something in there, and I, and I said it a long time ago, Mr. McGinley is gonna sell that land to some of them, and, you know, number one, I'm not gonna be attacked as we did on the Lowe's, and then number two, it's just gonna be a bunch of little stores out, out there, and, again, I'm just thinking of what Tenny Mountain is now, and what is just gonna irritate more as far as the buildings are concerned, and so I just hope that all of this... And so, I just hope that all of this goes to pass, that a lot of that stuff that we put it up for free is down the drain now, and we'll have a bunch of little stores out there. And I know there's something doing that, I just feel that we got better on the.
Do you need anything more from us, Mr. Lewis?
No, I don't think so. You have any questions, Ben?
Thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you very much.
That leads us to item C. Harry Blackie with Byco Fairgrounds wrote, "Request for reconsideration of approval extension for a portion of Mountain View Farms' phased development."
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to give a little background on this, or reiteration. Mr. Blackie, correct me if I'm wrong. Mountain View Farms, as we all know, went through some iterations and has been partially developed to a certain extent. At the time, seven years ago actually, that the approval was given, it was for a seven-year approval for both the subdivision and the site plan for what we'll just call the condo Mr. Blackie approached myself and Mr. Murphy, I think it was sometime last year, just for clarification, because he knew that the initial approval was, the clock was ticking on it, came before you folks. And the board directed me to speak to our attorney, once again, Attorney Ratigan, to get essentially his professional input as a land use lawyer on where all the approvals stood. Mr. Blackie was looking to see whether or not the approval, which at this point is 5-5-12, if he had to basically re-up for an, excuse me, an extension of it, of both of these approval site plan and subdivision, or if in fact, both of these projects were vested by active and substantial development. And you've all had this paperwork before, but I'm just kind of reiterating this to bring everybody back up to speed. Our attorney said that in fact, in his professional opinion, the subdivision was fully vested because of the drainage and road improvements down there on the site, but conversely, that in his opinion, the site plan was not vested. So, that means that at this point, the subdivision of Mountain View Farms is good to go forever and ever, amen, is not subject to any changes, potential changes in the zoning. However, the approval on the site plan is due to expire on May 5th of this year. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Blackie, I think Mr. Blackie is here to just speak to Attorney Ratigan's ruling and to have a conversation with the board. Is that fair?
Yeah, and to propose a course of action.
Okay.
Given the circumstances. Thank you very much for helping with the presentation.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I knew what we were talking about.
And what I've done tonight is, I've given, most of you have the package anyway, and we'll refer to that as we speak. It might be best.
Did he just pass that out?
You start by looking at the plan on the back.
No, but I've got.
And I'm going to try and bring you up to date on what exists out there now and what was approved initially, matter of fact on it. There's some new bases here for me, and I know, I don't think there's anybody here who was on the board when this was approved. If there is, there's not more than.
No, Mr. Gosney's absent tonight, so.
Yeah, okay. So, and it has been six and a half years, it's hard to believe. I don't have to tell any of you what's happened with the economy in the last six and a half years. Our timing was just perfect. The day we got the last approval is the day that everybody felt, that real estate fell off the end of the world. And so, we've been scrambling, fortunately, ever since day one, just to keep this thing alive. But what was approved here was a 45-lot subdivision. And you don't have the entire parcel there, but you might want to look at this for a second and then look back to your plan. So, what was approved were 45 lots, and one of those lots was, they were all individual lots with one exception, and that's Lot 44, which was approved for 38 condominiums. So, the lots are down in here, the condominiums are up here, and the plan that you have there just doesn't show the back end of the property and the entire Lot 44, which is about 41 acres. And so, that's what was approved. In terms of the status of that, the road improvements have been completed for Crescent Street and its entirety. In just in recent months, you have approved Plymouth Woods, which reconfigures this area, and they're actually under construction out there. I was out there today. They're under construction. So, the only portion of the subdivision, if you will, that hasn't been actively pursued is this area over here. This road is not in. This road services, is the subdivision road that services not only the lots along here, but also services Lot 44, which is the big condominium lot. So, the road for that lot is in. So, that's what was approved initially and the status of the construction. There were actually four approvals granted by the town, two by the planning board and two by the ZBA. The planning board approved the 45-lot subdivision as a subdivision, and as I said, one of the Lot 44 of the 45 is the condominium lot. The planning board also issued a site plan review approval, and basically what that, and that was for the condominium area, that was for Lot 44. And basically, what that approval did was, it approved the driveway configuration and the location of the buildings. What the ZBA did, they issued two permits, or two special permits. One to allow more than one building on a lot. They approved the number, and I can't even remember how many buildings there are approved here, but they approved the site for that many buildings. And the second approval that the ZBA granted was an approval to allow multifamily buildings. So, one to allow more buildings, more than one building on a lot, and a second approval to allow multifamily buildings. These buildings contain between one and four units. So, those were the four approvals that were granted at the time, and there was some coordination between the boards as that process unfolded. So, now, fast forward if we can, seven years. And the issue that brought me before this board back in August was the fact that there were some conditions in the planning board's approvals and in the ZBA approvals that suggested some timeframe within which certain things had to be completed. And if you want to look at the first document in that draft that I gave you, that's the subdivision approval, and I've highlighted, that's the 44-lot subdivision approval. And the condition that is, that I'm raising here is, I don't want to call it a concern, but we need to deal with it, is, it says, "All subdivision improvements must be completed within seven years of this decision unless extended by the planning board." So, that was a condition. Do you see that there? Does anybody, everybody follow where that is? Okay, fine. Now, if you will turn to B in the package. This is the site plan approval. And there's a condition in the site plan approval that says, "Active and substantial development must begin within seven years from the day of this approval." Now, both of these were approved at the same time, and that seven years expires in May of 2012. It's hard to believe that our economy's been in this circumstance for this long, but I suspect most of you have felt it, just as we have in one way or another, so I've stopped having to explain to people what that's all about, because pretty much everybody understands it. So, those were the two things that were in question, and the issue is, are those valid? I mean, are those things that we need to be concerned about? Is there some question about whether or not those two approvals are active going forward? And part of the answer can be found in D, if you'll turn to D. So, what happened after the two planning board approvals was that there was an amendment to those approvals. And what that amendment addressed, let me just find this. Okay, I'm sorry. If you'll turn to C, I get, keep my letter straight here. So, C is an addendum for an amendment, if you will, to the approvals. And you can see what I've highlighted, for an amendment to the original approval of the Mountain View Farms subdivision. And then, if you'll skip down to where I've highlighted, approval of the development agreement. So, what happened was, we as the developers entered into a development agreement with the town, and that constituted an amendment to the original approvals. And that development agreement is item D. So, if you'll now go over to item D. Ignore the pretty colors there. All I'm trying to demonstrate to you at this point is that this constituted an amendment to the original approvals, and there were two purposes of it. One was to create a phasing schedule, which it did, created, if you look on page, the third, what have I done here? Left out a page? Oh, I'm sorry. The third page, you'll see that there are phases A, B, C, and D. So, what's happened here is, the roads are in for Phase A, the roads are in for Phase B, which includes Lot 44, the condominium lot. Is everybody with me?
No.
No?
I don't get the page three.
The third page of exhibit D.
Okay.
You see the phasing schedule there?
Right.
Okay. So, Phase A is complete, Phase B is complete in terms of the roads, and that includes the condominium lot. Phase C is the area which has yet to be developed, no roads in. And Phase D is the area which has been reconfigured as Plymouth Woods.
Could I just interrupt for a second for my own clarification?
Yep.
The road to the condominium lot.
Yeah?
This is C.
Is essentially Crescent Street, you're saying?
Yeah. You have a, you want to look at that?
What is this? He's got just highlighted as C.
Oh, I think I'll show you.
He's got A, B.
I thought it was just describing.
Right.
This is Lot 44, so all of this is on Crescent Street, so that's.
Okay. And those are interior driveways, are they?
These are all interior, private driveways.
Okay.
I think he's saying the third page.
So, the development agreement, its purpose was two things. Number one, to create the phasing, and the second thing was to define the term "active and substantial development in building." Because you may remember, when we looked back at the approval for the site plan, it said within seven years, you had to complete active and substantial development, or you have to begin. Active and substantial development must begin within seven years. But then, that's what the original approval said, but what does that mean? So, in the development agreement, that was defined. Okay? So, and that had to be completed, the development agreement called for us to achieve that within one year, which we did. So, from the standpoint of the development agreement, we have, some years ago, achieved active and substantial development. So, the question that was, that Town Council addressed, and by the way, we agree with the Town Council's ruling, or his opinion, what he said was, that when you read the development agreement, it's very clear that the subdivision approval that was granted by the planning board, that the subdivision is vested, that we've achieved the active and substantial development. And so, he's suggesting that the subdivision is vested. But he went on to say that he can't find any language in the development agreement that speaks to the site plan approval. Can't find anything in there that specifically says that it includes the site plan approval. And I think he's right. I think he's right. I don't think it is in there. But I think, I'm reasonably sure that the intent was that the development agreement was intended to cover both. And I'm going to point out some, first of all, I was there, so that's my memory, and second of all, I'm going to point out some things that Town Council couldn't have been aware of when he made that ruling. And I'm not questioning, or not the ruling, but offered his comments. I think he was exactly right. But the things that he wouldn't have been aware of are that, I told you, we had four approvals, two from the planning board and two from the board appeals. And three of those approvals were approvals that granted permission to do something. The subdivision approval issued by the planning board was granted to give permission to build the site, to build the development, the entire development. The two ZBA approvals were granted, one to allow more than one building on a lot, and two to do multifamily buildings. The fourth approval, the site plan approval, what it did was, it approved the configuration. It didn't say you could build 39 units or 38 units. It didn't say you could build multifamily buildings. It didn't say that you could put more than one building on a lot. All it said was, or what it said was, this is the configuration of the road, and this is where the buildings are going to go. The board appeals, after they issued their two approvals, they amended their approval as well. And if you will look at E, you will see the amendment that the ZBA did. So, this short one-page document says that this is an amendment to two special exceptions that were issued. And what it says is that they gave me, they gave us a one-year extension that was conditional. And the condition was that active and substantial building of development, as provided for in section 1204-2C of the zoning ordinance, and as it relates to these special exceptions, shall be consistent with the definition for the same term adopted by the planning board relative to the subdivision approval granted for Mountain View Farms. So, what they were saying was, once the subdivision, under the planning board approval, achieves substantial completion, we've also accomplished that as far as the two ZBA decisions are concerned. So, what that means is, as of right now, based on Town Council's comments, there are three permits which are vested. The subdivision approval and the two ZBA approvals are all three vested. And then, we've got this little tail still wagging here, that we're trying to figure out how to deal with, and that's the site plan approval. And I told you that, and I know this is a lot of information, and stop me if I can answer a question. I'm really sorry that this is so confusing. The, I told you that I thought that there were some things in the development agreement, although it didn't actually reference the site plan approval, that certainly suggested to me that the intent was to include that. And I'm going to talk about those for just a second. First of all, the plan, if you look at the first page of the development agreement, which is item D, and you go to the second paragraph that says, whereas, it says, "Whereas the planning board has approved the Mountain View Farms subdivision as shown a plan recorded as Plan 11987," and it talks about, let's see, with the condition identified, "in a document entitled Plymouth Planning Board Notice of Decision dated May 5th, 2005." Now, the problem is that both of those approvals, the subdivision approval and the site plan approval, that those pieces of land. site plan approval, that those pieces of land were shown on that plan, and they were both approved on that date. They were both approved on that date. So, you know, are they talking about just one of the approvals, or are they talking about both of them? If you go over to the third page of the development agreement, and that's item D double A, and if you go to the phasing schedule, and you look at phase B, you'll find there's lot 44. Lot 44 is the condominium lot. So clearly, the intent was that that be part of the phase. The, and, okay, so there's some things in here that I think, there's no clear language, nowhere in here does it say site plan approval. But I was there, I'm, there's no question in my mind, but that that was the intent. And the fact that the Board of Appeals dovetailed their approvals with respect to substantial completion into the Planning Board's, and those have achieved substantial completion. The combination of those things, and the language that I'm finding in the development agreement, I'm reasonably confident that the intent was to have the substantial completion definition apply to both permits.
Approvals.
Say it again.
Approvals.
Yes, exactly. I'm sorry. So, is there anybody here who's not confused?
Can I ask just a question? On exhibit D, you've got the little tapestry section at the beginning that's highlighted in pink. Is that, I guess I'm not sure what that is.
Okay. That's a good question. So what's the solution here? And what, here's what, this is the end of the presentation. I'll answer your question. So, what Town Council has said is, the subdivision approval is vested, the ZDA has said, both their approvals is vested, and the question is whether the site plan approval is vested, or whether that's going to have some other term on it in terms of why it has to be completed. Doesn't make any sense to me that we'd have a condominium lot, where there are three approvals, two by the ZDA and one by the Planning Board, and there's one set of completion standards for one of the permits, and a different one for the others. So, what I'm proposing is, because Town Council has, and I think I'm correct, pointed out that the language wasn't particularly good in that development agreement, because it didn't clearly speak to the site plan approval. So what I'm actually suggesting, or proposing, asking you to consider, is doing a simple clarification to that development agreement, to make it clear that the intent is to have the definition for substantial completion the same for the site plan approval as it is for the other three permits. And that is one possible way to do that.
That's your board language.
That's exactly right. And I'm not an attorney, and if I were, my preference would be that your Town Council proposed the right way to do that. All I'm asking, I'm not asking the Board to agree with my language, I'm not asking them to establish the language. I'm asking you to consider clarifying the language by making it clear that the development agreement referenced both of the planning boards. And I would do that from a linguistic standpoint, probably falls within Town Council's, but that's what that was, it was an effort to show that it could be rectified pretty simply with a few word changes.
So it looks like, I'm thinking the Board needs to table this till our next meeting, and have time for Attorney Radigan to look at this.
I think we should proceed thoroughly with this. Yeah. That's all I'm going to say.
Yeah, I can, let me, and I agree with that. I just, what I would say to you is, I'm not suggesting to you that you need to figure out whether or not that's what the intent was, that's not the issue. The Board, you don't have to look backwards and try and figure out what that Board at the time wanted. I'm asking you to consider the circumstances as they exist today, and to make a decision about whether or not that's appropriate.
Any questions, Mr. Lewis?
Could you just pick that up?
Yeah, I'd like to see it again, please.
I mean, I'm looking at that section of Crescent Street that was built, well, kind of up from that intersection where the Y is, right?
Right there.
Right by the farmhouse.
Right.
Kind of, that whole section, it seems like that whole section was built for the purposes of lot 44.
You mean, from here?
Yeah.
Well, not necessarily. It created frontage for these lots along here.
Okay.
So what it did was, it created the frontage on this side of the street, you're absolutely right, for the condominium lot, and on the other side of the street, for these lots along here. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. I mean, I guess I'm going to be a follow-up, is, I mean, I, not knowing exactly what question was put to Attorney Radigan, and what information was provided for him, it's hard to kind of put his answer into the proper perspective.
I think, excuse me, I gave him the development agreement, I think I, and I can look. Harry had sent me essentially this, stuff before, and I gave that to him too, just so he would have the chronology.
Right.
So he got a lot of information.
No, I think he did. Like I said, I'm not suggesting that, I think he's right. I think he's absolutely right. And I'm not asking you to look back over your shoulder and try and figure out what the previous Board wanted. I'm asking you to consider the circumstance today, and unquestionably, I don't think you need Town Council's opinion to decide whether you have the authority to do that, although you may want to ask, but clearly, you have the authority to amend the development agreement if you want to. I'm just, I'm suggesting that I think it makes logical sense, rather than they have three permits with one definition, and one permit with a different definition. Just, and it's not that there's a different definition, there isn't any definition. Because if the development agreement doesn't apply to the, to the site plan approval, then for the site plan approval, there is no definition for substantial completion. We don't know why it is.
Now, could you first just show me where the condominium, where the ID?
Ready to go? Yes, sir. Yeah. So, this is Crescent Street, which is currently built out. And this is, these are a series of private driveways, and all of these buildings up here that are shown, those are the condominiums.
Oh, okay. So that, condominium grew up over the hill.
Yes, sir, it does.
And then, grew condominiums, they're not townhouse-type condominiums?
They are townhouse. In fact, some of them are freestanding individual homes, which are actually condominiums. The largest building, that's a four-unit building. This is a three-unit building, that's a two-unit building. These are all single unit buildings. Three-unit, 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 three-unit.
Just so, I understand, the subdivision, no, that's a question to go. The site plan approval, that looked at purely the condominium?
That's correct.
Fortune of it.
That's right.
So, all of the roadway layouts, cross-sections, footprints, drainage, et cetera, et cetera, for all the condos were covered under that site plan approval.
That's right. That's right. Your regulations require a site plan approval for multifamily housing. So by virtue of the fact that there was multifamily housing here on this lot, in addition to the subdivision approval, there was a second approval required for the site plan because there are multifamily buildings there. But again, it doesn't give us permission to do anything, it's kind of a different approval than the other three. It doesn't give us permission to do anything. It just says, yes, this building will be here, this building will be here, and this is where the driveway will be, and this is how the drainage will be.
If I may, I'll just, I'll sort of put this out there, and I don't put it out there with any goal of muddying the waters, but just sort of a philosophical thing that's kind of been on my mind for many, many years. If you look at the RSA that talks about active and substantial investing, the whole purpose of that is to give certain levels of protection to site plan projects and subdivision projects against changes in site plan regulations and subdivision regulations. If there haven't been any changes in either one of those two regulations and the underlying zoning under which the initial permits were issued, I don't think it makes much difference if six years, or seven years, or 27 years goes by. If those regulations never change, I think you can make a very big case that I'm good to go, you know, at any point in time.
I mean, could we extend it another two or three years, or two years at least?
Or whatever.
We understand the circumstances, so.
You can do that, but frankly, it just, it creates a burden that we would prefer not to have, because that means it's still hanging over our head. We don't, I mean, we don't know how much longer this problem is going to go on. I don't want to be back here in another two years and talk about this again. And the fact that the subdivision, the subdivision is, we've reached substantial development there, and the ZDA, the ZDA says that we have the right to build these multifamily buildings forever. We have the right to have these buildings in this place forever. The only issue is whether or not we have site plan approval, i.e., you know, the drainage system and the road system. And it just, it just doesn't make any sense to me not to have that to be consistent with the other approvals.
So you don't want to have to come back as our possible engineer could require you to build a whole lot more to make those roads possible?
I guess so. I mean, they're all private roads. The, I mean, the, well, that's the other issue, I guess, is a cost issue. I mean, we spent, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand dollars doing those plans. And we've got, there's other issues too. There's lenders, you know, we've got a lender here who's saying, wait a minute, I'm a little concerned about these permits, you know? If you were to grant us a two-year approval, or a two-year extension, I'm sorry, for this, this aspect of the approvals, and that just keeps a cloud over the thing from a lender's standpoint, as opposed to him knowing that he's comfortable that if this circumstance goes on, this economic circumstance that where he goes on for another three or four years, or five years, you know, where the lender, well, he worries where it is. Because you could grant an approval, an extension of that for a year, or even two years, and if this economy doesn't change.
Which could be another five years.
Yeah, that doesn't help at all. And 18 months from now, I mean, even now, we've got a lender who would be saying, hey, wait a minute, guys, I'm not sure that I can hang in there with you guys, because I don't know what's going to happen. They gave you a two-year extension, but if we need another one, can we get it? And the answer always has to be, I have no idea whether we can get it.
Mr. Kelly?
My biggest problem is, I think you've done a nice job here, and as long as you own it, that is perfectly all right. But I believe there was, one section has already been sold off to a nonprofit organization, and my only concern is, the next year, and the next two years, you sell it off, and somebody else takes it over, and doesn't do the excellent job that you've been doing. So if there was some kind of a wording or something, saying as long as you folks go out there, it could be better down thehill. The other thing is, that if you come in every couple of years, and I could see your face, number one, and number two, it just wouldn't be a big major problem coming in and having it extended, and having the wording say that it would be automatic by you just coming in. And before the Board, so they would say, it was all right, and in that way, at least we could keep a handle on it, both that you own it, and that company isn't going to open up in a few years, I'm not too sure. But I know that if a lender, if it's going to impair your problem with a lender, I'm not that strongly, you know, for that, but I just think it could be a stopgap of some kind, to keep everybody as well.
Okay. I'd be happy to respond. First of all, that's a, thank you very much for the confidence in us. I appreciate that. My guess is that you probably can't do that.
You can't.
I don't, I don't think you can legally do that, but, and, but you could, you certainly could condition your approval for the modification, or the clarification, on the owner coming back before the Planning Board once a year. You could clearly condition it on that, if you wanted to. In terms of us not owning the property and somebody else stepping in, you mentioned Plymouth Foods, that's a perfect example, that has been a change, but you approved the change. If anybody wants to do anything other, if we were, my brother and I were to get run over by a bus tomorrow, and we were to be replaced by somebody else, we wouldn't be doing the development, but whoever did it would have to meet the same design standards that we would have to, and if they wanted to change those, and justice is the case for Plymouth, they'd have to come before the Board.
Yeah, just, and the down to that is, I mean, the crux to the matter here is phasing, and we won't, obviously, phasing and zoning changes, you know, as they occur, you know, there's a certain amount of risk there, but phasing, building phase one has a cumulative effect on the landmass for phase two, phase three, or ABC, whatever. There is, you know, speak to the elephant in the room, there is topography there, there is drainage. So I, phasing, the good part about phasing is you get a chance to do it as you can. The potential for something that's not as happy is that you may have cumulative effects, but we do have oversight by the town engineer as stuff is developed, and those regulations, or those standards will be adhered to. So, I'm not playing either side of this, I'm just saying that it's, phasing brings a double-edged sword.
Yeah, we've, but we've got to live with that, no matter what happens to my request, I think.
Right.
But you're absolutely right. But nobody's going to, I mean, this is a pretty significant development, no matter where you're from. And I don't think there's any other way than to fix it. I don't think anybody's going to drop in here and drop eight, three units out of the sky all at once.
I can see why they want to put limits of seven years on this, because you come back to the Board, and it's completely different, and we're sitting here kind of just staring at you. But under the circumstances, it'd be nice to give him something to go home with, it'd be nice to give a solution tonight, but I'm not sure how confident I am with doing that. I'd love to be able to have two or three different scenarios where we could give you something after talking to the Town Council, that we could then make a decision with. Just, Mr. Randlapp?
I would make a recommendation that we move this to the agenda for the work session.
The work session.
So, I mean, there's a lot to absorb here, and we've looked at it in different ways, and I know myself, I don't feel comfortable making a decision either way tonight. I just got Radigan's letter today, and, you know, I would personally like to take care of it, and I think this way, you know, we can move along to tonight's meeting, and we can have two weeks to take a look at what we have in front of us, bring it up to the work session, and discuss it at that time.
All right. So we will, we're looking at tabling it. Do we need to?
We need a motion, yeah.
So do we have a motion?
Mr. Randlapp just made the moment.
We table this to our work session.
Mr. Roach will be second. Mr. Roach, all those in favor of tabling this item for our work session meeting?
February 2nd.
February 2nd. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Closed.
Do we need to, I'm glad it's planned like this, you know?
I'm not sure what. I'm not sure what I have. Harry, is it possible to get even a black and white of that schematic? Because that's really effective, because it shows the whole thing, and it's got good topo on it, so.
Yeah, I actually have a smaller version of that in color.
That'd be great.
So I'd be happy to get that to you. And the, I mean, somewhere you have the entire set.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I know, but we discussed this before.
I'd be happy.
I appreciate it.
I think we've gone through that.
I have to have Harry send me stuff, because it's so buried, I can't find it.
So that brings us to item number seven.
Oh, downstairs, I'm going to jail.
Sorry, I could ask one question. So is there any reason for us to be, can we give you any more information, is there any reason for us to be represented at that work session? I assume not, but I don't know.
I, I mean, in my opinion, I think if we look at it, and we have any questions, we can address them to Sharon. If she has the information, she can pass it on.
I can, yeah.
And if not, Sharon could go ahead and contact you.
I just, you do have this documentation tonight, I believe I passed that out, when were you here? October of last, or August of last year? Okay. So you should have in your massive files, a lot of paper.
Yeah, I think we, I think we do, because it came up.
Okay, right.
And I remember seeing it, and I've been on it.
Do you want to collect these again, so we make sure we don't lose them from now in two weeks?
Correct.
Well, he can look for a file.
No, you get to keep it. Although I, do you have, Harry, do you have a working copy for me? I know I've got this in one configuration or another, but if I, if it's okay, if I could take that copy, then at least I'll be on, literally on the same page with everybody else, so. Thank you so much.
And I think in terms of the things that were given to your attorney, I think it wouldn't have changed what he said, but I really think that the biggest issue here for consideration is something that he would have been unaware of, or he wouldn't have considered at the time, because it wasn't part of the package that I had given you before, and that is the fact that the ZDA, you know, has had two approvals. He was thinking that there were two approvals, two planning approvals, but I don't believe that he considered the fact that there were four approvals, and three of them, say, have defined substantial completion exactly the same. And it's the fourth one that I believe the intent was to define it the same in that agreement, but there's no specific language in there. And that's the piece that I.
I don't think we coordinated the paperwork that time, it was a different arrangement.
Well, we really deal with the planning boards, and it only came to my mind later that the ZDA could check, you know, that those decisions could check.
So we will try and relay that to Attorney Radigan and?
Uh, yes.
For our workshop meeting.
Yep. Do you feel that this letter, did I, gosh, I'm trying to remember. No, he didn't get a copy of this most recent one from November. Would you feel that the reference to the ZDA special exceptions that, you know, has been your premise tonight, in this letter, would suffice to send to our town attorney?
Or would you let me?
Perhaps something else?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that, that I think might be helpful.
Yeah.
And remember that they, that, I don't, I'm not suggesting that he's misinterpreted this, I'm not even suggesting that what he said isn't correct.
Right.
I'm asking you to consider amending the development agreement. Do you have the right to do that? Absolutely, you can do anything you want to do, as long as we mutually agree, we're the two parties in the contract, we can change the contract any way we want.
If you write it in that approach to the Board through me, and just cite that, because you know it'll go to Attorney Radigan, then maybe he will see a different perspective.
Fair. Well, he doesn't have to change his perspective.
Well, but the addendum, which, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
No, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
All right. Item number seven, public comments.
Our heads are spinning, Frank, please.
Yes. I would like to recommend that the item number three, the other comments in the hearing. The public comments at the end of the meeting, I believe, are appropriate, and as long as I've been sitting here, none of us really come forward with public comments at the beginning of the meeting. And usually, when we have people here, one of the restrictions is that no public comments can be about the agenda. So, it basically, the only thing where people have public comments on is some historical value, and I represent the historical value, and I have yet to come up with something that would fit the bill for public comments at the beginning of the hearing.
But, I don't think there's many people are going to sit through the whole meeting like you till the end to make your public comments.
Okay, well, if they come to the meeting, they usually come because of a particular subject, and again, back to the restriction issue, you cannot comment about something that's only intended for that hearing. So they still have to wait till the end to make their comments for the subject for that night. It's a suggestion, it could be in a work session, and I, the other thing I had is, I didn't know, minor subdivisions, are they subject to public inputs?
I think in the same format as public input, you know, butters first, and then, yeah.
Yeah, because your procedures were, you failed to open it up for public input.
You're right.
Because I would have encouraged, stood in concurrence, that what you did was correct, because I would have supported that action, but those two of us noticed that it was not given over to public.
Thank you, Frank.
Other than that, it was a very good meeting, handled public comments.
Somewhere along the way, I remember about where, and this might have nothing to do with this particular thing, but there was an article indicating that you had a subdivision or, you know, subdivision, and you subdivided inside that subdivision, that you had to go through the whole procedure all over again.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
But this didn't have to do with that.
No, it was a minor, because a minor is three lots or less, including the parent lot, yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you, Frank, for those comments, appreciate it. Will duly noted.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
All right. That brings us to item number eight, if we have a motion. Okay. First by Mr. Kelly, by Ms. Bishop, second, all those in favor of adjourned.
What time?
Aye.
What time, sir?
It is eight.
Eight oh eight.
Eight oh eight.
All right, thank you.
Beautiful.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Oh, yeah, yeah.
You can have anyone you want, it's not easy.
It's all contingent on him getting it to me quickly.
Yeah, don't we normally, on item number three, public comments?
Oh.